Are you alone?
Shut the door. So I just want to thank everyone for joining us again. I know some of this, for some of you who have watched now for four or five days, will be repetitive. New viewers, looking at the number of viewers and people that are tuning in. So it's important for us to kind of touch base as to where we are, even on a daily basis. And it's my intention. City Hall, as you know, city government, non-essential is closed, continues to be closed. But essential, the things that are important in our lives right now under these change certainly in Bridgeport, but these changed conditions in the state and in the country and worldwide with this pandemic continue to allow us and I think require us to give updates. I'll continue to do them on a daily basis with you. Tune in as you see fit for information and then you can do follow-up calls. As much as we're closed, I think I've said that not on a skeleton crew is able to respond, whether it's phone calls, emails, text messages, as are other city departments that are important as well. Some of the updates I'm going to give you are repeats from yesterday, but there's new stuff that may impact your lives or that you should know about on a local level. And I know we're getting inundated if you put on the TV, read the newspapers, or just go online to get news. I know that there is information coming in from everywhere, on every source, on what's happening in every place. We're impacted by things that, you know, maybe a month ago or two months ago were happening in China that we didn't care about. They are impacting. So we need to know what's going on and to be aware of it. So we'll do this as best we can with me talking. We'll have visuals to our left so that you can kind of see and updates though on the things that are most important locally on the health front. Our hospitals again and our frontline are doing a tremendous job. There's really not a way we can thank them. I mean, you can't thank them for putting their lives on the line literally with what has been repeatedly looked at as potential shortages. And we need to ring the bell constantly on a national level to make sure that those supplies are provided here. We are within 50 miles of the highest percentage of impacted individuals in New York State. New York State has half of the coronavirus cases in the country. New York has 25% and Fairfield County has two-thirds of Connecticut. So we're there. But I will tell you, as I said that Bridgeport, I think by and large, we're doing well and we need to continue to do well by following the protocols from the experts. We have no other source of information. This is uncharted territory. There's no school you go to to learn about a pandemic, about coronavirus. There's no you can look at except you go back 100 years and look at some other health pandemics. But we're in this together. We'll get through it. We're still in the early stages of this. There's some 415 confirmed cases of in Bridgeport. My phone doesn't stop. 10 residents have died. Number of cases are ages 40 to 50. Group, so this idea that, you know, it only impacts elderly. It certainly impacts elderly and people with pre-existing conditions is actually the specific pre-existing conditions that impacts even worse. But it does impact in a large percentage of young people. So I said this yesterday, I'm going to repeat it today and it's going to go to this redeeming mantra that we need to embrace, this redeeming mantra that we need to embrace about social distancing and sanitizing, washing our hands, wiping down and keeping that distance. It applies to us enforcement in the parks and elsewhere in the city. And that's why we've closed schools. That's why we've closed government offices. That's why the governor has ordered the closing of non-essential businesses. This isn't because people want to. And we understand there is a present and likely a residual economic impact and we're going to have to deal with that. But right now, it's my belief and I think others, that the best way to conquer this, the best way to get this behind us is to deal with it as a health crisis and to effectively abide by what we're told by health experts. So in Bridgeport, bad news, good news. We've got nine confirmed coronavirus cases. Three are hospitalized, six are home, and there's 10 people also being monitored. So this is kind of where we are with that. As we continue to look, I think we've talked about this, but I'm going to run through these and you'll see them up behind me. These are the closures. These are the closures that exist now. There's nothing really new here as far as closures. There's emphasis on this reduction of social gathering and distancing, the six feet and the 10 people. Remember that. This is important. If we're going to get through this, the city with the largest population, one of the most densely populated geographic areas in the state and beyond, we have to be cognizant of this and our own challenges to kind of not spread the virus. We have to act like we have the virus, as awkward as that is to say and to kind of put in our brains. We have to act like we have it and treat our loved ones, our friends and people around us like that. So that's six feet away. Six feet away and constantly utilizing the sanitary measures that are talked about. So these are the closures from the libraries to the schools, to the senior centers, to the zoo. The parks continue to be a challenge, but I think people are doing better. I talked to the chief of police yesterday. And again, we're sparingly and utilizing our law enforcement. But we will, in a matter of public health and safety, utilize where we have to if we see gatherings. I want people to go out. I'll say this again, I said it yesterday. I want you to go out if you can, especially weather permitting, to go out and enjoy walks, walk the dog, get out there. But demonstrate again what it should be, at least for now, an element of the way we operate socially, as awkward as it is. We joked earlier, loved ones throwing kisses to each other. I'm sure it's not that with people that know each other and are constantly with each other, but let's keep the distances where we can. Social distancing. For city side sanitation and recycling is on schedule. Again, you heard me tell you why you need to bag your trash. It's not because we want to make it just easier. We want to make it safer and more sanitary for our public facilities workers who are out there doing the job under difficult conditions. And we provided them with all that we can in the way of necessary safety precautions with gloves and so on. Next slide. Public facilities offices again will remain open, but only with essential staff. Their number is 203-576-7130. The transfer station is open Monday to Saturday, 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We call it one car per pit. There's two locations in there, they call them the pits. So they'll have one car at one, one car at the other. Bag your trash and we're keeping our employees at a safe distance too. Don't think that they don't like you. They're going to tell you just to kind of keep your distance and that's what we're doing with everyone. So some of this is new as we get into this slide right here. Public facilities permits and licensing have new hours of operation and they're by appointment only. So we don't want to stifle completely where we don't have to. Things like permits and licensing. So by appointment only starting this Wednesday, that's tomorrow, March 25th, Monday, Wednesday and Friday, so that's three days a week from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon. You can buy appointment and these are the email addresses for Holloway and John Aquita at bridgeportct.gov. You know, all of ours are at bridgeportct.gov and then usually the names in front of it, first name usually has a dot between the first and the last name. So that's james.holloway. And that's the phone number, 576-7123. I would expect the best times to call them would be between 8:00 and 12:00 on Monday, Wednesday and Friday if you have an issue with wanting to get permits or licensing. These are the hours of operation and this is new. We'd shut everything down on an extreme basis when we started about a week ago and we're looking back now and consistent with the governor's order, consistent with the governor has allowed and has ordered closed. This is consistent with that and we'll do that. Next slide. For any other matters for public facilities, again, feel free to call. Feel free to call, say it again, 203-576-7130. I mentioned it again because I want people to know, it's nothing urgent, but senior tax relief. You can follow the information on the slide, mail that in so that if you're a senior, you can get your tax relief application in and get your tax relief. We want you to get that. If we look to the next slide, again, you have health options. Access Health CT enrollment. It's open for needed health coverage. Enrollment started, it continues through the beginning of next month. If you can and you want to, sign up for that. Other things that are important to your lives that have changed, where accommodations are being made are the utility companies. They've stepped up. Some of this is repetitive from yesterday, but we have new viewers today, so I'm going to repeat it. The utility companies have suspended late fees and shut offs. That's the UI and the Southern Connecticut Gas Company. They suspended late fees and shut offs in an effort to help customers who might be struggling. So what does that mean? It means you can go, phew, I know I'm not going to get shut off. But I will tell you, I'd ask you to strongly keep up with your bills if you can. Set your own priorities as we go through this period of time. It's probably not going to end this week. It's probably not going to end next week with these closures and with these impacts, but it will come to an end. We will get past it. And at that point, I want people to stay pace with as many things in their lives as they can and where we can help, we will. But I have to tell you that we are relying in a period where they call this a pandemic and some would talk about it as a national crisis, which it is, a worldwide crisis, and where we have presidential and leadership from Washington. We need help from them. Local government is limited. We're constrained, not just by finances, by ability and authority. So I can communicate and I can make the provisions that we want to on behalf of all of our residents, but it has to be in partnership with other levels of government. So when you listen to these calls and you say, Mayor, can you do this? Mayor, can you do that? I'll do everything that I can to help support and in partnership ease the way through this for our residents and beyond because many more people than just our residents rely on us for our hospitals and our social services for the region. But there's only a certain amount that we can do without the partnership and the support from our national government and we're calling upon them again. And the leadership that we've gotten from our state senators and from our congressmen has been right what we need, but we need the rest of them to act so that we can have the support to support extended and immediate unemployment benefits, to support residents who are out of work right now or looking through unforeseeable future with no deadline in place for financial support. And for local governments, an element of that is to support local governments. Bridgeport needs help from Washington, as do other cities. I talk to mayors across the country on a regular basis. I talk to the mayors in Connecticut on a regular basis. The commonality of challenges that we have in the urban centers are not going to go away and they're going to compound and we're going to look to reassess. We're going to look to reallocate resources towards social needs of our residents beyond what we have now. We're going to look to support the homeless population and we're going to look to support parents, single parent homes sometimes with students now that are home. As articulated by our Board of Ed for an extended period of time, some school districts talking about through the end of the year. So we need the help and we need the partnership. Utility companies are stepping up. I spoke to the governor earlier today about some of the challenges our businesses are having and what we're going to do with that in partnership with the state and with education. I'll touch on that in a second. But back to some other stuff, I'm going to try and stay with the program they set up for me. Our staff, our communications office, our Office of Emergency Management has worked hard to kind of in a concise way lay out for you the best way for me to communicate. So I'm going to try and stay with the program. Okay, they want me to repeat about senior tax relief applications. So this is nothing different than what we've done in the past couple of years. This is not as a reaction to the coronavirus. This is the same senior tax relief application program that the city council, the administration through our finance department put in place two years ago and we increased it last year. What we said was with the application of hundreds of thousands of dollars, there is a way that seniors who are on fixed incomes can get a tax break on their property taxes in the city of Bridgeport. Many of you have asked me when I bump into seniors, a lot of them will say, how do we get that? Can we apply for that? Please don't do away with the senior tax relief program. Of course, we're not going to do away with it. We're going to keep it going as strong as we can. I would look to even enhance it if I could and I will if I can. But you have an obligation. If you want the benefits of the senior tax program, you have to fill out the application. And by the way, if you need help with it, 203-576-7201 is not up on the board. That's my office number and we'll be happy to help you with that because we want you to apply for that. We want our seniors to have the support that they need, especially through these difficult times, especially where you're probably seniors. I don't know what category I fit in. I like to think I'm not, but I think I am one of those that's not as young as I used to be and we're one of those groups that we have to kind of give special attention to as always. Okay, this is kind of a, I don't want to say a new announcement, but some new information on an announcement. Greater Bridgeport Transit, which has done a phenomenal job as well. These are bus drivers who probably were saying, we're telling them to stay home and they probably say, I'd like to stay home because I want to be safe. But they're out there driving, making sure people can get to places they need to get to, whether it's grocery stores, maybe doctor's offices. Maybe it's to work, hopefully those that are able to still go to work or whatever the needs are. Maybe to go get lunches for Bridgeport students between 9:00 and 1:00 o'clock. But the Bridgeport Transit District's reducing the number of riders. That's what we want to do because we want to, again, stay with the new social norm of social distancing. They're doing a fantastic job of sanitizing our public transportation, our buses. So yes, you should go with some trepidation and other with some concerns everywhere we go where anything or any place is occupied on a consistent basis with others. Doesn't mean anybody's a bad person, but we touch and come in contact with so many others and so many elements. So we should go with some concern and trepidations, the word I use. But know that they're doing a great job and they're trying to minimize it. So if buses have too many people on them, Greater Bridgeport Transit will pass by riders waiting at bus stops. So don't take it as, oh, he missed me or don't take it as they don't care about me. They're trying to do the right thing. So we have to kind of understand that. It's not permanent, but this is something that'll go on probably for weeks as this thing goes on. So understand that. Do not ride the bus, as they say, unless you have to. They're there to be there for all of us of public transportation and they're free. So that's less of a financial burden, but understand this is one of those things where they have to take certain precautionary actions as well. Not new, but worth spending a minute or two on because it's hopefully constantly changing in a favorable way for our residents. Unemployment and unemployment benefits. We know what unemployment benefits are and I emphasize the word insurance. Why does the mayor say insurance? I never heard of insurance. Unemployment benefit insurance. You paid into this. You're entitled to this in a period of time where there is a disruption or a termination or suspension in your income. That's why we pay into it. It's a system that was set up by the federal government and by state government. It is not a local government function, but we're here to help. We want people to know that you can and you should if you qualify and the requirements for qualifying are reduced. You don't need to just be a W-2 employee. It doesn't, it means you don't need to be someone who gets a paycheck every week. You could be a 1099 employee. That means someone who's contracted. You know if you are one, what that means. And you can now apply for state unemployment and hopefully the federal government in calls for mayors and residents and legislators like we have in Connecticut will enhance and support the program across the country and impact Connecticut and Bridgeport residents even more. So these benefits will be substantial, that there won't be a concern about an overflow because the state has a historically high number of applications already. But if you're entitled, don't be discouraged. You comply or file it. F I L E C T U I dot com. And there's some talk about how we can increase or enhance and support employers that are keeping employees on during these difficult periods of time. But I understand there are individual decisions that businesses need to make and we're going to be talking to them later today on a conference call. That's businesses in the city of Bridgeport, how we can help them. I don't think it's up on the board here, but talk to your employer about being furloughed or filing with the intent of being back at work in six weeks and you can get a even quicker impact on your filing. Career Resources, which is a partner in the city of Bridgeport, it's a nonprofit that does substantial work to help people in job transitions. They do second chance jobs. They do career placement. They do dress for success. They do so many programs to help people in the city and beyond. They're a phenomenal, outstanding nonprofit organization with great leadership and will provide guidance from career counselors. So if you want to call them locally for assistance with unemployment questions, they're unarmed, they're working in partnership with us. I'll repeat their number. I don't know if we have it up on the board. I think we do. It's right here. Local Bridgeport Assistance, 203-455-2700. It's up on the board, but I'll repeat it, 203-445-2700. And press option one. It gives you a live person, a live body. So that's kind of a good thing if you go through all those computerized calls and all that kind of stuff. We're in a position now where the alarm bell has rung as it should have earlier on the challenges that not only people at homes and jobs and maybe cars or other things that you take for granted don't have in the city of Bridgeport. Our cities are the centers for the homeless population. I see them every day and I know we all do what we can and maybe a discreet way to kind of help. We have a bigger obligation than that and we take it seriously. That's the city of Bridgeport in partnership with the state of Connecticut. And the commissioner of housing has reached out to me directly and our nonprofit organizations have stepped up and have continued on a daily basis to collaborate in order to address the needs, the special needs of the homeless population during this coronavirus. Just think about it. We're asked to stay at home. If you ask someone who doesn't even have a home, who relies and is in a homeless shelter where beds now are being treated even differently because of contagious nature of close proximity between individuals and sanitation and cleanliness and the challenges that a homeless person might have are compacting the spread of the virus, not just between the homeless population, but between the population in general. Not only do I have an obligation, but we all have even more of a, as you're made aware of it in this discussion, a concern. So I want to thank the organizations that have come together. They're too numerous to even name, but they're nonprofit organizations that have been there steadfastly through this. And city of Bridgeport elected officials, our city council members, George Cruz, Anita Martinez and others, who've stepped up and said, we want to play even a bigger role and ask the city, which we will do, to commit even more resources, our tax dollars and some reallocated state and federal dollars in partnership with the state to create the support mechanism for our homeless in the city of Bridgeport. And we'll have more as we talk about this tomorrow. We'll be introducing specifics after a conference call and discussions are ready to be announced tomorrow and the next day to support a homeless population. It's an important element as we are in this together, whether we have a big mansion, whether we live in the third floor or the first floor of a home, whether we have a single family home, or whether we're struggling maybe between jobs or with some concerns that put us in the position of being maybe homeless or with less than many have. So we're in this together in Bridgeport. We're looking for help certainly from our federal government. We're in partnership with our state government, but we're going to step up and do everything we can with our local partners in the city of Bridgeport and beyond to take care of our own. Our education system is making great advancements. Our school district, again, the backdrop, Bridgeport, the largest city. Bridgeport Public Schools, the largest population of public school students in the state of Connecticut with probably less means than 99% of the districts around the state. Our superintendent, our Board of Education, our teachers, our administrators have not said, oh gee, we got a pandemic crisis here. Let's just shut everything down and we'll pick it up maybe in September. They pivoted quickly, as I mentioned yesterday. They put into place, you know, probably ahead, as I've described it, from the superintendent of schools, ahead of 75% of even more affluent school districts in the state to put in distance learning, homeschooling for every student in the city of Bridgeport, while still on a daily basis providing student food services called grab and go. That's breakfast and lunch pickup. So if you're a parent, if you're a student tuning in, and I hope the students are tuning in, if you're a member of the school board or just a concerned individual in the city of Bridgeport, it's bridgeport.edu.net for more information, but I can provide some of it here to you. And the good news is that despite the challenges, we are in a position where our school district has transitioned to effectively have implemented home distant learning for the school population. Have now have a regular rhythm on grab and go and are in a position to, as the board will show you right now, look towards supplementing that with state help on laptop computers. Again, Governor Lamont and I spoke earlier today and I want to compliment the governor as I know he's doing with every city in town as he does calls on a regular basis. His staff has been tasked to support residents throughout the state, but cities and towns. He asked what we needed. This talked about the 60,000 laptop computer devices that are being donated. And as an alliance district, these are big terms, but they have application in law and in practice here. As an alliance district, that means that a district like Bridgeport that has certain needs, certain demographics, we're working with our superintendent to receive a number of these laptop computers that are needed in Bridgeport by Bridgeport students. This will help supplement what we call this distant learning for lower income students across the state, but specifically in Bridgeport. We'll be talking later with the commissioner from the state of Connecticut, hope to have an announcement as the governor makes an announcement at 4:00 today about the dispensing or the dispersing of these laptops with Bridgeport being one at the top of the list. So Bridgeport students, the good news is they will be able to supply you with laptops. That's Bridgeport High School students will be able to supply you with laptops if you don't have them now. Because of the state's efforts in donating some 60,000, we'll get our share, we'll be at the top of the list and this will enhance our distance learning beyond where we are now for families, for students that don't have their own laptops. So I want to thank the state, the commission of education, the governor and those that have donated these to help enhance our distant learning and help the students in the Bridgeport School District. So that's good news. That's news for Bridgeport schools and it supplements what our school district is doing. To that end, you can expect that schools will be closed, that distance learning will continue through April 20th. I can't give a formal announcement beyond that, but the way things are shaken up, I would expect that this could be, let's try and adapt to this as it were the new norm. I don't suggest that it will be the new norm, but isn't it great to know that if we can turn under difficult circumstances in uncharted territory like this with 22,000 students who have less than others and continue the curriculum that'll allow our students to advance with 22,000 students who have less than others and continue the curriculum that allow our students to advance, that we can utilize this as a learning tool to even make our opportunities for education enhanced one more way, one more step with the support of parents, teachers and administrators. Thanks so much for all your efforts. Kudos to the Bridgeport Public School District and to the state of Connecticut and the governor and the commissioner for working in partnership on this critically important element of getting through this pandemic, this coronavirus, which we'll get through together. I'm cheating over, if you see my eyes slide to the right, I'm looking at the notes that are provided. Again, hello, thanks for joining us, Bridgeport. I see some names that are familiar, Barbie, Bonnie, Carmen, Annie, why are they all female? Females are taking over the world. But I appreciate your partnership, for your attention and for your support as I try and update us in Bridgeport about what's going on. Let's see what we got on the board. Oh, so this, if you're a parent, I got one of these today, I'm a parent, I didn't get it because I'm a parent, I probably got it because I'm mayor. But this, when you see these come out, if you see a text message come out on your phone, this is a systems that are in place and they're working. And it gives information about our distance learning. I'll just read this just for the heck of it, it says, Bridgeport, and Bridgeport says, good morning, welcome to day two of our distance learning. Please pick up two activities from the distance learning packet to complete today. As you've heard, today's school is now virtual until April 20th. The rest of the fifth grade team and I are working very hard at creating our own learning packet. So you continue to have work to do that will count towards our 180-day schools. And again, a compliments for doing a great job. So this is the type of stuff you'll see come over the text message. You're seeing it in action in real time, much appreciated, just like Rowena White is in real time making sure I got something to drink as my voice fries out. Next, we want to keep rolling through this. Is, again, Bridgeport Public Schools distant learning, Bridgeport EDU activity packs are at school. If you haven't picked them up yet and it's only day two, pick them up. Again, we'll get the online stuff with the laptops going for many, but you need to pick up the packets and make sure that our children, your children, our students have all they need to continue to continue the school year. So also in new announcements, our Office of Planning and Economic Development is called O P E D. That's why it says O P E D up there. Has put into place electronic-based processes in place for requesting building trade permits, general building permits and inspections. So what's this about? So as we go through essential and non-essential, if you look at the orders well articulated by the state of Connecticut, by the governor. It talks about what are essential, we want to keep the buildings and construction going on, that's statewide. These are important elements and you'll see businesses that support those as being considered essential. And businesses can, where they think that they should be remain, excuse me, should be one that remains open, can apply to the state for a waiver. I heard that the Commissioner Lehman was talking about verbal waivers and they're giving written waivers. Doesn't mean everybody's just inundate the state with waivers. But if you think you can comply with the new social norms in your place of employment and that your business and those jobs that are retained by your business are essential, you can apply for waivers with the state of Connecticut. And that's important to do and I know businesses in Bridgeport are doing that. And we'd ask them to be supported in that effort where appropriate. But we've also put in place the opening of our business building department procedures for inspections. In other words, if you need inspection for a permit for electrical work or for plumbing work or those type of things. That is put into place through our building and zoning office in compliance with the governor's order. So zoning, building, engineering and fire marshals will all be open on a point net basis and will be starting on Wednesday. That's allowing for developers, contractors to continue the projects they're doing. Those are not just city-sponsored developments like the amphitheater and the other projects that we're partnership with like on Steel Point. Those are for day in and day out businesses that need to get through the rigors of getting a permit or getting an inspection to keep your project going. And those that are doing projects like that, and I have some familiarity with this, make sure that on your project, you're still complying. So you don't have 10 people on a site that are not complying because you will get shut down. We will enforce the health and social distancing concerns above timelines for getting a job done. This is an equivocation, we will be emphatic about this. We will enforce it through our building department, we'll enforce it through our local authorities to do that because we have to stop the spread of this virus. Saying that, and you know, almost pounding the desk here because I wanted to get set in your minds that we have to do this. At the same time, as you can see by opening some of these, we want to minimize the economic impact on individuals where we can. So you can call by appointment, I don't know if we're going to have a number up here yet, but we'll get that information out to individuals so that they can have access to that. Three o'clock today to that ends. I've called for a meeting with the businesses through the Bridgeport Regional Business Council, which is a regional business membership organization. It goes beyond just the borders of Bridgeport. I don't know how many members, but hundreds of members, businesses, and maybe many of them will be on the call today with me. Donna Nafrio, who is the president of the Bridgeport Regional Business Council and Tom Gill, who is head of economic development for the city of Bridgeport. And so what we'll do on that call, and you're welcome to join that call. It's a virtual meeting at 3:00 PM today, you can join us, BRBC Facebook page. And we'll take questions, first of all, we'll tell people what we're doing, we'll talk about the closures, we'll talk about the announcements. We'll talk about the partnership with the state of Connecticut and the essential, non-essential closures of businesses, the status and how it's impacting. I want to hear from them as to how we can help those that are laying off employees and the state may step up on that in the near future. The impacts of that on businesses in the city of Bridgeport and how we can help on a local basis. And the governor and I, Governor Lamont and I spoke earlier about having his commissioner or his representative, not on this call, but on a call later this week so we can further address the needs as they've been hopefully articulated by business leaders today on a call. So reaching out to them, we want to be in partnership with businesses. We want to minimize the economic impact as part of the overall solution to get through this coronavirus pandemic. We want to minimize the economic impact. But again, as we do that, we only can do that by social distancing and deal with it as a health crisis. If we don't deal with the health crisis and minimize the impact, we're going to see devastation like we haven't seen, at least as predicted by health experts and that's what we want to avoid. So far, as I've said, our healthcare providers have done a phenomenal job and we haven't been inundated. But we've got to continue to do this, that's how we're going to get back to put the economic situation back where we want it. Restaurants being open again and employers being able to open on a full-time basis, those non-essentials as they call it, on a basis so that we can continue to have people work and put people back to work. Again, these are the numbers in Connecticut as to where we are. We are going to continue contact verbally with our healthcare providers. I'm also reaching out to our universities, we're looking at big institutions that either are in the city of Bridgeport. The University of Bridgeport has been hit by this, our other universities have been hit by this. It's impacting them all in different ways. Students have had cases of coronavirus in our region. So we need to know what we can do to continue to support them as well. So let me wrap it up, I'm looking over to my right, see if there's any questions, if there are, I'll try and answer them. Marguerite. Is that Jose? Sweetness? Sweetness is on? Ida and Daisy? Are any of those male? Is Jose male? Jose. So look, I want to make light on this, I want us to stay in good spirits, I want us to stay focused, I want us to stay healthy. I want us to stay in small groups, less than 10, in the parks. I want people to stay at home. I want people to adhere to the state, federal and local calls to work together to get through this, to protect each other. I want an emphasis on seniors being safe. I want an emphasis on all of that so that we can get through this in the next few weeks. I will tell you, I hope that as I go through this, the numbers remain low in Bridgeport. We can't guarantee that, but what we can do is do everything we can to minimize that. As we get through the healthcare crisis, we'll constantly address the economic and fiscal impact on our city, on our residents. Let's stay together with this, we'll be okay. I'll be back with you tomorrow at noon. If you have questions between now and then, you can call my office. I'm home confined in the office during the day, so I look forward to hearing from you. See you tomorrow, thank you and God bless. Hashtag in this together, thank you again.